Okay. Welcome.
You're ready to go? Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce Greater Los Angeles Annual Town Hall, our one, our monthly virtual forum for 2021. This is our first one. It was an unprecedented year in 2020, but we have proven to be resilient as an organization and as a community. The virtual networking event is hosted by the chamber usually every third Wednesday of the month. We occasionally adjust to the following Wednesday in view of holidays or big events. Hi, my name is Roslan Orsiaga, a board member, and I will be your co- emcee for tonight. This Lois Klaver. The virtual forum is broadcasted on Facebook Live. Feel free to share our Facebook Live broadcasts and host a watch party with your friends, and we can reach a more, a more audience. For our viewers, you may share your comments and questions. We will do our best to answer them during or after the call. Our board members, Celeste, Mandarin, and Gemma Bergstrom will be monitoring the Facebook Live comments. For those joining us today for the first time, welcome. To make the most of your experience, log in early. Our virtual doors open 10 minutes before the event. Please turn on your videos to facilitate better interaction. Please mute your microphone. Be mindful of background noise when you are not muted. Limit distraction and avoid multitasking as much as possible. Make sure your online name is appropriate. Stay seated at your camera and be present. Have your information ready so you can copy and paste in our Zoom chat box for attendees' quick reference. During the breakout room, you will have the opportunity to connect and share your 30-second introduction. We respect everyone's time, so please be mindful if you're over the time limit. Thank you, and here's our president-elect and VP for Events, Lois Klaver, to go over our agenda for today.
All right, oops, I'm on mute.
No, you're not.
Okay, no. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again and welcome for our first virtual networking event. If you're not speaking, please put your lines on mute. So today we'll have some opening reflections, welcome remarks by our president, sponsor acknowledgements. As for Espy Agbayani and Ms. Star Tomlinson for, from the Drain Company. We, of course, will take a group photo. We have a powerhouse cast of a chamber partner and affiliates. So I'm very, very excited. I think this is the first time we got them in one room. So very excited for that. We'll go over some reports from, you know, the executives, from the president's report, myself and membership reports. We'll have some sponsor appreciations. So thankful for a very successful 2020. Despite of it being very challenging, we came up, you know, successful. Also some announcement on 2021 events. Public service announcements courtesy of PACE and our registered RN in the chamber. And then we'll go into our breakout room. So we'll get to connect for, you know, 10 minutes there. And then we'll send some feedback surveys to you guys, and we'll close with acknowledgement of board members. And at the end, for the new members or first-time attendees, we invite you to stay and so we can at least introduce ourselves and get to know you a little bit. So up next is Vivian Le for today's reflections.
The pandemic issue, very well known, brought everything to a halt. Practically all businesses, industries, and organizations were affected. And yet, despite of all this, the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of Greater Los Angeles took the challenge. We won't deny that at the very beginning, this really threw us off at the very beginning, but we never, but we were always determined to make it. And the reason, it's because of you. The trials we faced last year made us stronger, wiser, and more effective than ever before. Our setbacks became our setups and brought us to a different level. 2020 may have the stigma of disaster, desperation, turmoil, but it was the best year we ever had. Thanks to our loyal members who stayed with us, believed in us, and supported us. We're truly grateful. So tonight is your night. We are celebrating you. As interpreters, we should never let anything come between our dreams. Always remember and do it afraid.
Up next is our opening, a welcome remarks from our president. Go ahead, President Annie.
Hello, everyone. I am so happy to see everyone here. I'm so glad that you're here because basically we're here to clear the dumpster fire that was 2020. I'm, I'm sorry, I have to say it. But at the chamber, what happened was that we rallied all together. And at this meeting, we're going to show everyone what we have done and what we will continue to do, what we are all committed to do. We have a great team here of dedicated board members. And at the same time, we also want to reach out to our members and to our guests today to let you know that the chamber is here for you. The chamber is your channel, the chamber is your conduit to your business success. So if you have problems, please, please reach out to us so we may help you. We don't promise to know everything, but we have a ton of affiliates whom we are going to hear from today. So I might as well go straight into it. So ladies and gentlemen, it is my pleasure to welcome to our meeting Ms. Marian Jox. She is the executive director of the United Chambers of Commerce, which we are a member of and have been a member of for some time. And the UCC usually has big events during the year. And unfortunately, we could not pursue to do them the same way that they had before. But still, the UCC is there to provide its service to the chamber. So ladies and gentlemen, let's hear from Ms. Marian Jox.
Hi, everyone. It's so good to see everyone. I feel so lonely in our building, though. Sometimes I'm the only one there, so I really looking forward to having everyone come back and, you know, us being able to see each other in person. But a little bit about United Chambers. We've been around for quite a while, since 1977. A group of powerhouses here in the San Fernando Valley got together and decided that to put this, we're a nonprofit organization together to help chambers. Because, and you may not know this, but there are, I believe, 21 chambers in the San Fernando Valley, also including Hollywood, Calabasas, Burbank. So that's a lot of chambers in a, in a community. But you have to know that chambers are powerhouses. They really are essential businesses that you can call a chamber and, and somebody will answer and get back to you. Even if they don't know, they will find the answer for you. And that's really important because there's so many, there's so many outlets out there. Oh, call this person, call that person. It just goes to voicemail and you never hear back. So the chambers are very, very important, especially during this time. We have to stick together and help each other, and that's what chambers do. We have 19-member chambers in, under the United Chambers, so we're very proud of that. And like Annie mentioned, we do the, a couple of our larger events are, actually, our upcoming event is our inspirational women's event, and five women have been selected that are inspirational. And it's our sixth annual, so we're going to do it virtually, but we hope to have our seventh annual in the fall if things change. We also do the Mega Mixer, and hopefully you guys were part of that last year when we did it virtually. It was really fun. It was really new for us. Honestly, I'd never heard of Zoom before this pandemic hit. So I'm, I'm still learning it. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for supporting your chambers. It's very, it's so vital to both of you. So thank you.
There you go. Thank you so much, Marian. And I am the one who usually attends the meetings. So if anyone wants to join me or know more information about attending the Government Affairs Meeting and other events, please do let me know. And I would like to now go to our next special chamber partner, who is actually housed in the same building, because as you may know, Marian is mentioning that she's so lonely in the building, because we have our physical office in the same building as UCC. And this organization has actually been doing us some favors by loaning us keys and other stuff when we need to use the boardroom, when we were still doing in person. But right now, I'm really very, very proud to again, present to you the president and executive director, I think. I, I got the, the titles mixed up now, but she is the head. Okay, we'll just say that. She is the head of the Valley Economic Alliance. And ladies and gentlemen, here she is, Ms. Sonia Blake.
Oh, thank you so much, Annie and Lois and everyone, the whole board. Boy, it's just great to be here with FACCGLA, and Happy New Year, welcome to 2021. I'm going to run you through real quick a little bit about the alliance, starting with the value that we provide. So the Valley Economic Alliance, we basically provide technical assistance because we have a board of 100 of the leaders of the San Fernando Valley, government sector, nonprofit sector, as well as the business community, large and small. We have a way of opening doors for Valley businesses. Next slide. Our strategy, so what we do is threefold community outreach. We get the word out through all manner of marketing, through various partners, like this wonderful organization and many other social media, and site visits to local businesses. Number two, we put together networking and educational events that help people understand how they can access capital, how they can start exporting, how they can do procurement and contracting, digital marketing, and all kinds of other topics. And then number three, we do one-on-one business coaching and consulting with local businesses to help them to build their businesses. Next slide, please. In terms of the one-on-one assistance, what do we do? People might wonder, well, we connect people to grants and government support services. We connect them to lenders and help them access PPP lenders and know which lender is right for them. There are many lenders, CDFIs, traditional banks, CRA officers, so many different things, a complex landscape. We help people understand which lender, which technical assistance provider is right for them, and we connect them with resources in the Valley. So that's really all I wanted to share from the slideshow. Of course, we have a number of events coming up. We have a program coming up, end of this month, on accessing grants and loans, et cetera, et cetera. Keep in touch with the chamber, and you'll be able to learn all about our projects and programs. We're going to be connecting Valley graduate students to help us do business assistance throughout the region. And we're going to be training high schoolers in digital media and social media marketing to help business owners as well, so look for those. We're putting together a couple of cohorts called LA Launch Lab and Growth Lab to help local businesses to network with each other and share information as they build. So we want to collaborate with you. We are here. I'm Sonia Blake, and on my team is Michael Carter. And we'd be happy to help you connect to Valley resources however we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Sonia. And, you know, this is really valuable information. And actually, some of our members had connected because there was a Valley strong promotion last, last year, right? So I think I was able to participate, and one of, I think, La Bear Salon was able to participate in that, and that's like my local campaign. So thank you so much for doing that. If you have any questions, everyone who was in the call, perhaps you can put them in the chat. And if I don't see one specifically in the next few seconds, we're going to go on to the next one. But please know that you can always contact me or anyone in the board mem, of the board members. If you'd like to be connected with UCC or know what's going on with UCC and with VEA, and you've heard it from the horse's mouth, I would say. So at least, at least you'll get to know who you will be dealing with. Thank you so much, Marian and Sonia. And I believe you both need to jump off to the same meeting, I think, or to another meeting.
Thank you so much. Good night, everyone.
Thank you. And next up, we have Fatima.
Great. Thank you, Annie. Hello, and good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Fatima Bustos Troy, also a board member with FACCGLA. And tonight, it's my great pleasure to introduce to you our event sponsors, Ms. Espy Agbayani and Ms. Star Tomlinson. Each will have three minutes, share about themselves and about their businesses. And now I'd like to start with Espy Agbayani. Ms. Espy Agbayani of Espy Realty is the owner and independent broker of Espy Realty and also a board member with FACCGLA. I love Espy's mission, helping seniors, that would be me, make real estate their best investment and retire in style by helping them leverage their real estate equities and transition to their next dream home. Espy is very active in social media with her weekly live stream on Facebook Wednesdays at 5:00 PM. So you can watch her there. And during her Facebook live stream, Espy also shares about healthy and wholesome food. So you know she's a foodie, as well as building generational wealth in real estate so you can live the lifestyle of your dreams. You can connect with Espy via her Facebook, Instagram, and LinkedIn. Let's all welcome Ms. Espy Agbayani of Espy Realty with a big and warm applause.
Hi, I'd like to know, is my screen up? Can everyone see it?
Yes.
It, I think, yeah.
And hopefully you can hear it.
It's a beautiful day. No worries today.
There's no sound.
Cool breeze outside my window.
Okay, I can hear it. Let me try this.
I can hear it.
Yes, I can hear it. Oh, okay.
It's a beautiful day. No worries today. Cool breeze outside my window. This is the life. You're set for life. Just loving life. Retire in style with Espy.
Woo-hoo, that's the first time I've heard my jingle. Ms. Annie, our president and a composer.
Beautiful.
Yes, anyway. Hello, everyone, and welcome to our first event of this year to meet and network with business owners and show how we can collaborate and help each other as chamber members. I'm Espy Agbayani, a licensed real estate broker since 1982. Do you know that there are over 10,000 baby boomers that turn 65 every day in United States? I help baby boomers and their families retire in style, leveraging in their equities today to live their dreams, lifestyle, the last third of their life. I work with a team of professionals, real estate lawyers, contractors, CPA, local developers, and referring out-of-area brokers and relocators to help in the smooth transition. Real estate activity is very active at this moment. Why? For the last 10 years, we have been experiencing shortage on housing. The millennials are getting older and starting to buy their own homes, and they're starting their own families. Because they have income but short in down payment, most parents, the baby boomers who are equity-rich, are helping them on their purchase. With us experiencing the lowest interest rate, thus, we still experience multiple offers in scarcity. Meanwhile, more and more are moving out of their homes in the bigger cities and buying away 30 to 40 miles away from their bigger and for bigger and cheaper homes that are more affordable. Many of us are affected by the COVID stay-at-home, that most seniors are left alone, separated from their families. Children 22 to 29 years old move back to live with their parents because of loss of job or work-at-home scenarios. Watch my daily Facebook Live and weekly live stream as we show nuggets on downsizing, upsizing, leveraging on the new Prop 19, and even retiring out of California like Texas or the Philippines. Ask me questions in the chat box or call me for your own scenario. Retire in style, leveraging on your real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Espy. Great to see you again.
Thank you.
Okay, and now I have the great pleasure to introduce Ms. Star Tomlinson, who joined FACCGLA in November 2020. She is the CEO of the Drain Company Plumbing and Drain Cleaning Specialists. The Drain Company has been providing preventative and emergency drain services for residential, commercial, and multi-unit properties in the greater Los Angeles area since 1969. So you know they have credibility and they have longevity and sustainability. I love their website tagline, "We clean your drains, not your pockets." So awesome. This is evidenced by the five-star reviews on Yelp and also on Angie's List. That's usually because the CEO, who was a mathematics teacher at Franklin High School in Pengegram, Tennessee, is a five-star herself, no pun intended. Everyone, let's give a five-star welcome to Ms. Star Tomlinson of the Drain Company.
Well, thank you very much. That was beautiful. Wow, I'm going to cry. So the biggest question I get asked all the time is, how did you become an owner of a drain company, a drain cleaning plumbing services? Back in 1989, I, my grandfather was trying to sell the company, and he was having difficulty trying to find a maintenance company that, that wanted to buy, to purchase the company. And I was helping him do his books, and I saw an opportunity that was amazing that, my background was dentistry. I wasn't sure if I wanted to be a hygienist or a dentist at the time. I love dentistry because I love helping people. And when I saw the company that my grandfather had started, how I get to help people, it's different than dentistry, but it's, it's still the same. We get to help people. And that has been my quest, to be part of the community, part of its family business. So we get to, we get to help families. You know, plumbing's not very sexy, but when the drains are backing up, you need us. We do, we, in fact, we started out just doing drain cleaning, no plumbing whatsoever. At the demand of my customers, they wanted us to do the plumbing because they didn't want to have to call another plumber because we specialized just in drain cleaning for, for many, many years. And so I made my husband go get his, his license. We got licensed, and for the last five years, we've been doing plumbing and sewer inspections, hydrojetting, sewer repair. And the reason for our tagline, it started out because our prices were very, very good, probably the cheapest you'd find. But what, and he actually evolved into something even better or more advanced is that we do not do coupons, we do not do, you know, gimmicks to get our customers to use us. We give a good, fair price, and we keep it that way. There's no, there's no getting there and trying to upsell you. There's no, there's no BS in our pricing. That's, that's, to me, that's the best thing that I can, that I can say. So the really cool thing with COVID, you know, there's always silver linings. It's, it's, this COVID has been an awful, awful thing for many, many people. My heart's go out to families that have lost their loved ones through this. But for us, I saw it as an opportunity to work on my business. And I'm happy to say within the next six months, we will be franchising so that I can carry on the same integrity in every, every, every community. Every franchise will have to join Chamber of Commerce. It will have to be part of some kind of charity. And this way, it gives opportunities for people to actually be business owners. And I, to me, there's nothing been better than being a business owner. So I don't have a really fun music thing like, like Espy did. That was beautiful, Espy. That was gorgeous. I do have a song, though. Who wants to hear it? Okay. Well, if you got a clogged-up sink and it's begun to stink, pick up the phone and give us a call before you even blink. Thousand friendly service, forget it all cleaned up. So your drains will drain and your water will flow, and you won't go bankrupt. Family-founded business, let us do what we do best. Call us at the drain, call, we clean your drains, not your pockets. Thanks for listening.
That was amazing. Good job, Star.
Awesome.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
That was incredible. Thank you so much. Up next, I'd like to call on our president, Ms. Annie Nipomuseno, for the president's report and sponsor highlights. Thank you so much.
Hello, everyone. This is my 2020 annual review. We started the year by launching our Entrepreneurship Magazine, which showed us everything that happened the previous year. Then we dove right into strategic planning for 2020. And we were also doing an office redo. It was about time. And then bam, COVID hit. And then we were on lockdown, but we went online right away. A few months later, though, we lost our business planning advisor, Mr. John Swin. Businesses were struggling, so I proposed the Chamber Chat video series. Chamber Chats were one-on-one interviews with our members as they shared their advice, thoughts, and expertise on how we could handle this very unique and challenging situation. By the end of the series, we had 17 speakers and 51 videos. Since FACCGLA is a member of the United Chambers of Commerce, I made it a point to attend every single meeting. I wanted to learn from experts such as Chamber Executive Dave Kilby and learn to take action by reaching our government officials with our concerns. And yes, that is a reply from then-Senator Kamala Harris, whom I wrote to request that chambers of commerce, which are C6 organizations, be included in the relief programs. Through UCC, I got to join meetings with local officials such as LA Controller Ron Galperin, whose website is a very, very extensive source of information about LA. Business owners were able to bring their concerns to the Los Angeles Police Department. Instead of the mayor's luncheon that happens every year, we got to do it virtually with Mayor Eric Garcetti. During the last quarter of the year, I started hosting the What Works webinar series. This is an ongoing series which is proving quite popular due to the specific subjects, and our audience gets to speak with experts. FACCGLA has also continued to support artistic endeavors, such as the Ganap Choir Concert, which featured a choir that traveled all the way from the Philippines on scholarship. We also got to support the Festival of Philippine Arts and Culture, which after a hiatus had to return virtually. It was a three-day affair that featured these artists that you see here, and I got to write a song for the songwriter's circle. And we got to do our very first video ad. I also started coaching for online tools training because, of course, everyone has to be online now. And the chamber actually uses a lot of apps in order to do its business. The chamber is here for you, so please open our emails or reach out to us or contact me or any of our board members. There is a lot going on, a ton of information, and we want to make sure that you don't miss it. We have a great team of dedicated people here. As I serve my second and final year, I want to leave the chamber as sound and as organized and motivated for our incoming president, Ms. Lois P. Klaver. And you betcha that I'm going to get the board to sing again.
Just look around, it's everywhere. Don't we get my joy? Being a part of FACCGLA.
So in case you missed it, anyway, we will be putting it online. So please follow our page. That's the best thing to do. Like our Facebook page, and it is simply the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce. I guess if you search FACCGLA, it's going to show up too. And you've seen our logo, so that would be the one that you want to follow. We're also on Instagram and on LinkedIn.
So up next, I'd like to call on our new Chamber affiliates. I'm very excited, like the United Chambers of Commerce and the VEA. This is mainstream. We utilize these resources because, you know, I'm a big proponent of not reinventing the wheel and I'd rather hire experts than figure it out when I have to fumble through it. And these two mainstream, very big nonprofit and also organizations. First is SCORE Los Angeles. We will have Paul Apodaca speak a couple of minutes as well. And then very excited to have our new partnership with Grow with Google. Isn't that amazing? So that will be Roberto Martinez also sharing a couple of minutes with us. I'd like to call on Paul Apodaca. He's a SCORE certified mentor from SCORE Los Angeles. All right, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much and good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to be here. SCORE is a national nonprofit organization. We're primarily funded by the United States Small Business Administration and we have chapters located throughout the US. Next chart is tonight, I'm representing SCORE Greater Los Angeles. Our mission is to help new and existing businesses succeed. We help clients by providing free business guidance and advice. And we have a staff of about 75 volunteers that have a variety of backgrounds. Some have background in nonprofit management or for-profit management, banking and finance, manufacturing, sales and marketing. As a mentor, I'm a specialist in LinkedIn and I provide mentoring to clients that are just getting started on LinkedIn. Our mentoring services are free and they're confidential and they're unlimited. We try to develop a partnership and a long relationship helping the business management throughout the life of their business. During COVID, as everybody is, we've adjusted and we're offering our services, our mentoring using video, phone and email. And we'll start up again with face-to-face once it's safe to do so. We also have workshops that are low or no cost, usually $20 to $30 on a variety of business topics, especially related to current events on COVID. Next chart, please. So just a few comments. While we do offer volunteering services, we also want to take this opportunity to reach out to the Chamber and let you know that we're also recruiting people to come in to volunteer with SCORE as a mentor. Or if you have a specific specialization, you can also lead a low-cost workshop. So always looking for volunteers. If you're interested, if you go to the last chart. I appreciate you looking us up at our website at scorelos angeles.org. And I'd like to end by just wishing everybody to be safe and continued health for all in this very unique time that we're all in. So thank you for the opportunity tonight to speak on behalf of SCORE Los Angeles.
Thank you, Paul. And I would say, you know, definitely reach out to Paul for his LinkedIn expertise. I am a big proponent of LinkedIn. I have gotten businesses. I got my job there actually and also networking nowadays. You know, it's nice to network on Facebook, but it's really more professional if you have that LinkedIn presence. So thank you, Paul, and looking forward to more partnership with you. And then if you have any questions for Paul, please put them in the chat box as well. Up next is our next new Chamber affiliate and partner, Mr. Roberto Martinez. He is the 2021, he's the official 2021 entrepreneur in residence for LA Optimized. Very proud for that, from the office of LA Mayor Eric Garcetti. And he is also a national, Google National Trainer and Digital Coach. And we will have an upcoming workshop with Roberto. So Roberto, I'd like to hand you the floor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chamber. Very excited to be here with you guys today. I love the energy, the singing, the dancing. I feel like we don't need an actual physical location. We're having a great time as we speak right now. My name is Roberto Martinez. For those of us who can't roll our Rs, my name is Robert Martinez. I'm inviting you all next month to our first ever trainer with your Chamber. Very excited about this. Those is gonna be there as well. It's at 6:30. We want to see you all there. We're giving away a free Google Mini. Next slide. For those individuals that want to reach out to me, that's my email address. You can shoot me an email regarding anything under the sun regarding Google. My name is robertomar@google.com. And if you want to go to other workshops, feel free to follow us at my handles or go to that little URL link so you could sign up for future webinars that we host every month. Next slide. For those of us who are Chamber members and who are partners and other Chamber members, I highly recommend you guys apply to our partnership program, which is called Grow with Google Partners. It's very easy to apply. Takes you a couple of days to get approved. That link is at the very bottom, g.co/grow/apply. You get all kinds of goodies, benefits, and when the world opens back up, you could have speakers like myself and other Google representatives come in and present onsite. Next slide, please. So now I quickly want to use that lot of amount of time to talk about a free program that the mayor has launched to help each and every one of us as entrepreneurs. I love the energy in the room. We want to help our entrepreneurial community here in Los Angeles and we launched this program to help each and every one of you guys be able to sell online during and after COVID. Could we go to the next slide? So we're providing four free services to any and all that apply. On top of that, we have programming, but I really want to focus on these four services to help everyone here in our community sell. First thing is online business listings. We're giving away free online business listings. We'll create it for your business or for your friends' business at no charge. Second, we'll do an e-commerce audit, completely free. Doesn't cost you a dime. We'll show you how to optimize your online presence to be able to sell. Third, we're giving away free websites at no cost. Doesn't matter if you're a product or a service. We'll create it for you. And last but not least, we partnered with the leading institutions for creatives to provide you free creative works at no cost. We're talking about your brand logo, photos, social media posts, you name it, at no cost to you as an entrepreneur. For those of us who want to apply, next slide, perfectly timed it perfectly. If you prefer to go to this particular URL, you could go there. I'll slack it on this chat as well. And if you have any questions for me, I'll put my email address there as well. Feel free to reach out to me. I'm here to help in any shape, way or form that I can as a Google Digital Coach or as the Entrepreneurial Residence for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Roberto, for the very... There's a lot of information going on. So if you guys missed what everybody said are amazing partners and affiliates, you know, this will be recorded. It will be on our Facebook page. So you can always refer to it. And Roberto, feel free to interact in the chat box. If anyone has any questions for Roberto, feel free to give him a quick chat. So much Roberto for your generosity and looking forward to growing our partnership. We're very excited and congratulations again for your role as the entrepreneur in residence for the mayor's office. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, guys.
And then feel free to connect with Roberto and Paul in our breakout rooms later if you have additional questions. All right, so it's my turn for my events committee report. So I think our president Annie will do the screen share. At this time, she prepared a wonderful presentation. I got excited as well. Okay, welcome everyone again. Thank you for attending. So in spite of a very challenging year, you know, FACCGLA, that's, we have a very long name, so we use our acronym, feels very blessed with extremely hard-working officers and board. We have, many have struggled with their businesses or their jobs, but they're hard to serve and volunteer is beyond admirable. In doing so, we have set our record-breaking number of events in a year, with 27 total events. So thank you so much for that. Congratulations, everyone. So this is a mix of two social and fundraising events, which is our gala and holiday mixer for affiliate events. We have participated with COFAK, UCC and OfficeZilla. We had 10 networking after-hours, which converted to the Bionihan Virtual Forum, our popular and well-attended event. Four networking lunch, for lunch, virtual lunch networking, which is a brand-new lunchtime schedule, which is focused on well-being and taking care of ourselves as business owners and professionals. We also had three membership onboarding, which helps new members be familiarized with our Chamber What Works webinars. If we can pause there real quick. And then, hold on, okay. Three membership onboarding, which helps new members be familiarized with our Chamber. Four What Works webinar, which shares expertise of highly experienced individuals and encourages participants to engage. So with this, a big thank you from the bottom of our hearts for those who attended, who next worked with us and shared the Chamber with your friends. So we hope to duplicate our success, to be even bigger and better in 2021. In case you have missed our events last year, we would like to share a big overview of a blessed year with new connection and finding ways of doing things. Our main fundraising event, which was our Shiny Shimmering Gala. Actually, if we can, if you've seen that a little while back, there you go, which was last January, was quite memorable as it was the last time we get to party. Hopefully in 2022, we can bring back our in-person gala. I am claiming it now. It will be the Roaring Twenties. Ready to party. So we'll celebrate and party the night away. So nobody copies that, okay? So next up is our Sip and Stop Networking event in February. This one was remembered with a delicious charcuterie board and overflowing 60 attendees who came at our BFG conference room. By the way, it's small if you've been there. So 60 people attended. So we were bustling in our scenes. This was one of our biggest attendee number in view of the well-received monthly networking events prior year. And then COVID happened. We were determined not to cancel any upcoming events. So in just one week, we immediately converted to a virtual format. We were surprised how many people attended and just keep on attending. I guess people, you know, need a connection in these unprecedented times. March, April, May came. Then we realized, you know, we'll be here for the long haul. We gotta make things more fun and interesting. So we had our first dress-up Filipina-inspired networking event with our beloved Consul General Adely Cruz as our guest speaker. Another new thing we tried was, next slide, is our lunchtime hour. So that is our consul general and this is our winners. So we had some games. So the next thing we tried was the lunchtime hour. So we launched our first virtual lunch networking event. Since it was lunch, you know, why not feature our favorite food while networking? So we had to do some care and feeding of our members and let them know that we have new tools in our virtual world. Next slide, please. FACCGLA was able to host three very successful member onboarding events. So thank you so much to our dedicated member team. We are the first step in the engagement in events committee and then it's the membership team that takes care of you guys. So thank you so much. We made sure we are connected to our local network and resources. Next slide, please. And featuring the VEA. Then more self-focused virtual lunch networking events on health, fitness, looking good and feeling good. Next slide. The Chamber also connected with government officials and leaders to serve your advocate to provide resources during the pandemic. Of course, and that's our Commissioner Jessica Colosa, who graced our event and became our resource speaker. Of course, the year will not go by without an access to capital event. Next slide. At this time, we brought in an expert lender panel to help small business owners in this very tight and changing credit environment. One thing that this year taught us is how to be resilient and be prepared. It was definitely not the crisis we expected, but the Chamber is always here to provide useful information. Next slide. This is for the crisis preparedness. Then we have, next slide, please. Then we have officially launched our first What Works webinar by our well-known and successful Filipino-American-owned senior care franchise business and longtime FACCGLA member, One Hard Cares. Thank you so much. Since we have a lot of real estate expertise to share to our community and with a changing real estate market, we have featured a panel of real estate experts from sales, lending and renovations. FACCGLA, next slide, is part of a bigger community, COFAK, Coalition of Filipino-American Chambers of Commerce, where we participated in a mega mixer together with seven Southern California chambers and four Texas chambers. These are Filipino-American chambers. Next up is another successful What Works webinar on homeownership by Retire in Style with Espy, our sponsor for tonight. Next, being part of COFAK, we have access to benefits of OfficeZilla. So this business expo was in January last year. With all of the uncertainties still going on, next slide. Our third What Works webinar focused on planning, on planning while you can by our FACCGLA member and estate attorney, Linus Ebbe. Next, besides COFAK, we have joined mainstream chambers in UCC of the San Fernando Valley in their Halloween-themed virtual mega mixer. You can see, next slide, where you can see our very own president, Ms. Annie Nepomuceno, dressed as her real-life character, Wonder Woman.
That's my everyday outfit.
There you go. The Chamber has, next slide, has also many financial experts, where we shared tips and strategies on forging your financial future. Last but not least, next slide, is the What Works webinar from our superstar social media marketer. Is he here right now? I saw him here, Jay Aquino. Thank you, Jay, for joining us and having invited so many members. We ended up, we ended the year with a bang. Next slide. And we know we just needed to party and have fun and we did. We sang, we dressed up, we played games and we drank Lambanog inspired in spirits, courtesy of Papo Jay's Lambanog. We are excited for this year and thank you for your support and contributions to our Chamber, which kept us financially strong with your membership and event fees and sponsorship, especially Henry Chen, who has sponsored many, many of our events. So thank you so much, Henry Chen, for getting a shirt. And for this year, we will have our Thrive 20, March 17. So this is our annual celebration for 20th year anniversary. Oh, I guess there's that sound. So upcoming events. Hold on. Okay, so 2021 first quarter upcoming events, February 20 is the Grow with Google webinar, Connect with Customers and Manage Your Business Remotely. February 17 is our next monthly networking event like this one. We have two What Works webinar in February. So that will be How to Be Financially Secure by Jerry Pallone, Using Your Entrepreneur Powers to Thrive in Extraordinary Times, by Dr. Fatima Bustos Chori. So very excited for that. If you are a new member and have not attended our onboarding event, please attend March 10. And as I mentioned, Thrive 20 on March 17 will have expos. We'll have a networking event, that event as well. And last but not least, is our What Works webinar, How to Care for Your Elderly. How to Care for Your Elderly While You Work by Ellen Sampson. And just a quick overview of our goals for 2021 is to make sure, you know, we keep our events to hold at least twice a month. So keep in your calendars every third Wednesdays and fourth Friday lunch. So make sure you can attend that. We will retain a multi-platform. It's still, you know, virtual and in-person as allowed, but we're gonna get towards that. Build a deeper collaboration with our FACG La Chamber affiliates, partners, and COFAK chambers. I'm very happy to see that our COFAK friends, FACC Seridos, shout out to you guys. There's a lot here. So thank you for attending. Anybody else I miss?
Also from Pasadena.
Oh, yeah. Who else, Jerry?
Paul Mirador.
Oh, Paul. Thank you, Paul, for attending. Thank you so much. Also, our goal is to become the premier networking group serving the Filipino-American business community. This will be our strength. Moving for, okay, Fred is also here. Thank you, Fred. I know I'm missing someone. Foster a strong community amongst members through business referrals. So because we're here for business. And then continue to deliver organized, informative, and fun events. Again, join the Chamber if you are not a member yet. So I went over time. But if you have any questions from me or suggestions, thank you again, and appreciate you very much. So I'd like to call up next Ms. Connie Mapue for 2020 Membership Highlights.
Thank you, Lois. I'm so proud of our events from 2020. Good evening, everyone. I'm Connie Mapue, and I'm the Vice President for Membership. Let's see what Annie have prepared for us. Thank you, Ms. President Annie, for an awesome presentation. It brings us joy so much that we always look forward to your very, very engaging and very exciting creation. So we'd like to, I'd like to thank all our members from 2020. We have forty-one new members. And actually, we have, we have, even during the pandemic, guys, we were getting a lot of new signups. We were a little bit worried when COVID hits during March, but thank God that we got able to bring members and our, and even our renewing members were able to renew their membership. And go ahead, next slide, Ms. Annie. Okay, so.
Yeah, people can also be reminded that when you're supposed to renew. So thank you for joining. We have like, you said Connie, right? Forty-one members. And we'd like to get to see their faces now. So I hope you could recognize the people who you're gonna be seeing, Connie, so you can call out some faces that you know.
So on January, we have most of our board members, Ms. Vanji, Mr. Roy Tabara, of course, Membership Gemma, Vivian Lim, and of course, our President Emeritus, Mr. Jerry Pallon. And most of our members here are very supportive of the chambers. Greg, Toto's Barbecue. And Mary Dory has been with the board for a very long time.
And that's Georgie.
And Georgie Bautista, of course.
And in February, the love month, we have more members joined. This is your anniversary year. So we have over here Lois and Ellen, President-elect Lois, and then Ellen is our recent President Emeritus. And who else is in the photo, Connie?
Of course, Mr. Tom Cattis. He's here tonight, joining us.
Woo, Tom!
And we have Mr. Bob Alba from Farmers. He's been with FACG La for maybe more than five, six years already. And we've always, Bob is always supporting the Chamber for our events.
And we have Lorna Bautista of Serenity Nursing School. And that's Mark Talis, one of our attorneys, who is a member. And let's go ahead and just tell everyone quickly who is on this slide.
Lario from Labor has been always supporting us. Our new member, Ms. Pam Banlaw. She's connected with. Was it?
Cadillac of Beverly Hills.
No, in the Philippines, she is connected with.
Jimbei.
Yeah, Jimbei.
And who's that lovely lady in the center?
I don't know who's that. Okay, Andrew Aliado is joining us always, even he's in the Philippines. And of course, Eileen Miranian has been a member of FACG La for more than three years. And we have Mr. Dabi Tishio, who's just a new member, but he's been supporting the Chamber, attending our events. And on March and April during the pandemic, we have Tita June, June and Tita Minda of Fiesta Fast Food, who's even during our events, he needs to deliver food, but he's joining our events, right, Annie?
Yes, that's right.
Yes, and of course, our board members, Ms. Dr. Fatima Bustos Choi. And of course, Angelo here, joining us, our past Vice President for Events.
And hopefully, you can start to recognize them. So we're gonna just say their names. So we have here, we have Amy, we have Reddy, we have Cindy, and we have Mitzi. So if you can recognize them, so we're doing this so that you can recognize the faces. Not everyone can attend. And we have here Espy and Henry Chen. You have to know these people because they've been showing up. And we have, of course, Belina, Luke, Linda, and Femi.
And Femi, yeah.
And who is that over there?
Of course, George in the house here and Attorney Lioness, who's been very helpful with estate planning, and Pierre Narváez, and Joseph. Joseph is always here to support FACG La.
And Pierre Narváez, also attends our events. And who's that lovable teddy bear over there?
One of our board member, Andre, and Clement. I don't know, Clement is here, he's not here. And Ms. Ams. Ms. Ams has been with FACG La for decades.
And Nico, he did like one of the first Chamber chats. And we have, of course, Patrick Sia, who needs to know what a Google Mini is. And I saw that in the chat. And we have Rita and Evelyn Saunders, who just moved in from the Bay Area, and Doris. Doris, yes.
From One Heart Care. And of course, November is our big month. Jay Aquino joined us. And we have Mick Diaz, of course. And we have Ms. Kathy Current here. Daryl Crutchfield renewed his membership, right? And even Manny from SMD, he joined us from the Philippines. And of course, Ms. Claudia Chaveria. She was not able to join us tonight, but she is a very supportive new member. And more members for November. We have Celeste, of course, our sponsor tonight, Ms. Star. And we have Annie Canell. With all the names.
That's Claire, that's Adrienne. And you guys also need to start seeing like who these people are because we can't see them all closely in Zoom. So it's nice to see their faces here. And of course, the team of Abi Rongkilio of Net Realty.
Of course, Celeste, our hard-working board member. And this December, we have a lot of renewing members. Lea Rosley, our board member. Of course, Apple in the middle will be our muse for FACG La. Of course, Rick Vargas, Social Media. And here we have right now, of course, Annie. PG came back as representing her own business, of course.
And Ron.
Ron Asap, of course. Thank you, Ron, for always supporting the Chamber.
So we also have our partners whom work with us. So let me play that slide again, that one, this one. So we have Asian Journal, SFB Business Journal, and The Alliance, and Vandichoso, and Ishcastor Media. And of course, everyone, please update your photos. Not everyone is in the photo. And connect with your ambassador if you need help with that. Because we have like a whole ton of people, actually, who are not in the photos. Would you believe that, Connie?
Yes. Do you need to update your profile? So just go to our website, FACG La, and click on Member Account so you can update your information.
Yes, we wanna, we wanna know who you are. So right here, we have our founders and past presidents, and they are present most of the time. And we also would like to thank then everybody for joining us. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, everyone. If you have not been joined our FACG La, so make sure you click the link. I'm sharing in the chat box and sign up right now. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Annie.
Thank you. We do still continue to hold our office. So we would like to thank our donors. We have Apple Mandarin, Dr. Lee Dedicatoria, Kaiser So, Forever Healthy, and Body and Brain, Donna Lavang. I'm not sure if she was able to join us today. Is she here today? Okay, and then we have, of course, Tony, who is here. Thank you so much for supporting, for bringing us raffle prizes during our gala and being an all-around great guy. And of course, this has made such a dent in our, or at least in my mind, because they really make great charcuterie. And it really was the highlight of our last in-person event with sixty people attending. Thank you so much for making our holidays super great because of Papo Jay's Lambanog. And I think it's Christina Espiritu. I can't see everyone right now. Christina Espiritu and Christine Konsumi. Thank you so much for that mixology that you did during December. And then we have, of course, thank you for our Level One sponsors who gave cash donations. We have Fork and Spoon in Woodland Hills. We have Tom Cattis Insurance, who also regaled us with his meaning, everyone should get long-term care insurance. Okay, that's it, that's what you need to do. Thank you for Dr. Michael Wool, who gave us an intro when COVID was just starting. And thank you to Attorney Lioness Ebbe, who did our estate planning webinar. Thank you, George, for sponsoring one of our events. Thank you. And of course, Level One also is our One Heart Care Giver Services, which is a franchise. So if you're looking for a business that might not, that will succeed COVID in senior care and home health, please continue to contact them. During our gala last year, Lilian's Bread and Sweets was one of our page advertisers, our former board member and continued supporter Fiona Hilario. I'm sure, I hope she's here. And I believe that her salon can open now. Thank you to our President Emeritus, Jerry Pallon, for your contributions. And of course, Ms. Gina Mabub. And Mira Gonzaga, thank you so much. Roy Escusaro is also a former board member, who has ESCO checks. And Joseph Sarmiento is also one of our Level One sponsors. For Level Two, we have, of course, the lovely Ms. Espy Agbayani of Espy Realty. And the lovely, longtime board member, Ms. Vanji Tabara. So if now it's challenging for you to prepare your food, you need to give her a call for free cooking lessons. And Level Two also is Clement Tagle. And thank you so much Reeves Immigration Group, who last year was able to give a talk on immigration law. And they are a bronze sponsor at the $500-plus level, including Mr. Daryl Crutchfield. I'm not sure, is Daryl in the? You can wave if you are. I can't see everyone. Daryl has been very supportive, attending all our in-person events. He's been, he did a Chamber chat. Of course, Dr. Fatima Bustos Choi, who's one of our popular co-hosts for our events. She is a coach, and her expertise is mindfulness. You think you don't need it, but yes, you do. And during this time, there's a lot of home renovations going on. So we have Yuri and Celeste, who are doing custom hardwood flooring, and they're the very best to work with. And of course, Versobia Home Care Services is only one of the companies of Angelo Versobia. Thank you so much for your continued support. And Patrick Sia of Servpro, which they do fire and water cleanup and restoration. And I believe they also do sanitation, especially when disinfecting for when COVID, when COVID started. And we have, as our silver sponsor, as the $1,000-plus level, it's World Remit, which is promptly being one of the best money sending, what do you call it, sending money services all over the world. And we have my own Eva, who's being very supportive and really saving our butts when it comes to doing a lot of our admin tasks. And of course, donating a lot of their time, are a lot of our board members, including Ms. Connie Mapue, who is extending herself so much. And she is a financial advisor for World Financial Group. And of course, Lois P. Flavir, has been, in spite of having such a high-powered and busy job, is always able to do this. And of course, Music Arts Events is the one that produces all this music, all these videos, and actually even some of the graphics, and most of the graphics too. And our gold sponsor is our President Emeritus, Ms. Ellen Sampson of American Geriatric. Just before COVID hit, I think you heard me mention earlier, we were doing an office redo. And aside from providing a sponsorship for the event, she bought all our furniture. And last, and definitely the one who gave the most would be whom we call our ninong. Now, who knows what that Tagalog word means? It means, what does it mean? It means godfather?
Godfather?
Godfather, godparent? Because he gives you gifts in Christmas. And he has been gifting us a lot of money this entire year. Thank you, Henry. Please do not, please do not sawa. What's the word for sawa? I can't think of what the word for sawa is. Is Henry here today? He did suffer a loss in his family. So we're praying for his family. And in spite of that, he never forgets about the Chamber. So he has his thirty years of mortgage specialty. If you're considering or seeing if you are fit to buy a home, he is one of the people in our Chamber. We know you have a lot to choose from, and that's actually good because then you have a choice on whom to reach and you get to know them here in the Chamber. So thank you so much to our sponsors for making 2020 a record-breaking year. And we hope that you will be sponsoring once again at Thrive 20, Thrive at 20 on March 17. Thank you so much. Top share.
Thank you, Annie.
Lois, good evening, guys. And you know, I'd like to really congratulate Annie, Lois, and Connie for doing a wonderful job. If Las Vegas is the city that never sleeps, FACG La is the Chamber that never rests. Even during the pandemic, we see a lot of activities, a lot of new members being recruited. And you know, everyone enjoys the company of the Chamber. So yeah, I'm tasked to introduce three of our affiliate Chamber partners. And they are really very, very close to us, not only to FACG La, but for the entire Coalition of Filipino-American Chambers of Commerce. You can see them every Chamber event. So the first one that I would like to introduce is the oldest organization, one of the oldest organizations in the Filipino-American business, Filipino community. They are located in the Filipino Historic Town and SIPA has been, how many decades already? I think four decades that has been with us, serving the community, having the Outreach Program. And their connection actually, and their great help and value to FACG La is when they started the entrepreneurial training program. And I was part of that connection. That was the first relationship we had in SIPA eight years ago. And now, they're very, they're part of the community partner of the Coalition. And they are now, they are represented today, night, by their Executive Director, Ms. Kimmy Manikis, and also their Business Counselor, Mr. Dave Andrew. Okay, and the second community partner that I will be introducing as well is Babuhay Credit Union. And he is representative, and that organization has been set up since 2019. And they've been a partner, not only of GLA, but also for the other chambers in Southern California. And it is represented now by their Business Development Director, Mr. Fred Doctor Seal. He's also the President Emeritus of Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce, South Bay of Los Angeles. Unfortunately, the third community partner we have right now, supposedly sharing with us, is Office Zilla. But Tony Chigucheras, Tony Chu, Chigucheras has to leave and jump to another meeting. But let me now call on the first speaker. But let me now call on the first speaker is Kimmy Manikis. We'll talk about more about CIPA.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Good evening. It's nice to meet you and see familiar faces. I hope you're all well and that you're staying safe during these times. I'm Kimmy Manikis. I'm the new Executive Director of CIPA, search to involve Filipino-Americans. Many of you already know CIPA very well. Excuse me, and I just want to say that it's a really an honor to follow in John Swin's footsteps and continue what he envisioned for the organization and for the community. So we are approaching our 49th year in operations, so almost 50 years, serving the Filipino-American community throughout LA County, as well as the community of historic Filipino town. As the slide shows, we have three pillars of work that include Health and Human Services, Arts and Culture, and Community Economic Development. We're proud to have served generations of Filipino-American families and youth. And stepping into this role, I look forward to building and growing our breadth of work. One of the new exciting projects that we have in the pipeline is the creation of 63 affordable housing units, which will also serve as CIPA's new office when it opens in 2022. And so I'm going to pass it on to Dave Icaranal, who is our CIPA Small Business Counselor, who's going to talk a little bit more about our entrepreneurial training program.
Thank you, Kimmy. Thank you, guys, again, for inviting us to this amazing panel discussion. There's been some great shares, a lot of awesome positive events that have been going on throughout the year. So it's awesome to see the energy continuing to flow, even though there's all this craziness that's happening around us. So I greatly appreciate all of that. With that said, as Kimmy stated, my name is Dave. I am the Business Counselor for CIPA. And today, I'm just going to briefly talk about our entrepreneurial training program that we have coming up. Essentially, it's going to be broken down into eight topics over the course of four days. And remember, you only have one future, so make sure that you act on it now. With that said, and if you have any questions pertaining to it, there are going to be multiple topics. I can go over that more in-depth. And I will have different flyers created for each topic with registration links for each one as the, the dates get closer. So if there are any questions surrounding the program, just feel free to email me at dave@cpacares.org. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave and Kimmy. I know some of you may have some questions for CIPA later on, but we'll serve those questions after we hear from our next partner, Mabuhay Credit Union. From Mr. Fred Docdossil.
FAC GLA for having me. Did you know that up until quite recently, despite the fact that there's over 4 million Filipino-Americans in the US, and we are the second-largest Asian group in the country, we didn't really have our own full-service financial institution that specifically supports our community? So as Jerry mentioned, my name is Fred Docdossil. And in addition to being the founding director and President Emeritus of the Filipino-American Chamber of Commerce of South Bay, Los Angeles area, as well as being a board member for the Coalition of Filipino-American Chambers of Commerce, I represent Mabuhay Credit Union. This is a company that I'm proud to say traces their roots back to 1951. Quick math, that's 70 years ago. And again, we are, we are among the very first full-service financial institutions that caters to the Filipino-American and greater community here in Southern California and beyond. And as our, you know, our tagline says, "We advance prosperity for our Mabuhay community." And we do this by providing a full array of deposit products as well as loan accounts. So on the deposit side, we obviously have savings accounts. We actually have a couple of different kinds of youth accounts, checking accounts, money markets, IRAs, and share certificates or CDs. But another thing that we do offer on the consumer side of things is we have loan products. So we offer personal loans, debt consolidation loans, credit cards, auto loans, both, you know, new and used, as well as mortgages. So we offer, we help in terms of purchasing homes. We help with refinance as well as home equity lines of credit or HELOC. So again, you know, I'm very proud to have this collaboration, this collaborative partnership with FAC GLA. Because essentially what that means is that as long as you're a member of FAC GLA, all it takes for you to become ultimately a shareholder, which means a part-owner of Mabuhay Credit Union, to open an account, it's a minimum of a dollar deposit. And with that, you have full access to all the rest of the products and services that we offer. That's the contact information, and I'll definitely be sharing this on the chat as well. So let me know, Fred Docdossil, Mabuhay Credit Union. Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you so much, Fred. I know a lot of our members, not only in GLA, but also in other chambers, have availed of consumer loans, right? Personal loans and even car loans, for that matter. So guys, he's the guy, in case you need any financing for your personal needs. And the third speaker actually is not here, Tony Gutierrez. But Office Silla, just briefly, is a, like the Office Depot type of business. And they offer great discounts, especially for members of the various chambers of the Coalition. So they're a basic partner, a strategic partner for COFAK. And, and also, they, you can view their website. Also, if you visit the cofak.org, all of our chamber benefits are all included in that, in that website. So I will end up the presentation. Thank you, guys, for CIPA and Mabuhay Credit Union. And looking forward to greater cooperation and greater collaboration between our organizations. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us. Up next is a quick public announcement for everyone. I'd like to call on Reddy Babasa, one of our members, just to share some quick information on the Paycheck Protection Program.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Well, Lois, thank you for having me tonight to extend this program that we have right now. I'm pretty sure you guys know what PACE is. It's Pacific Asian Consortium in Employment. It's actually a community development corporation that creates economic solutions to meet the challenges of employment, education, housing, and environment, and as well as business development in the Pacific Asian and other diverse communities. Right now, I'm one of, one of the business loan officer. And we offer Paycheck PPP Protection Program for any businesses that needs an assistance. You can directly contact me and I can help you. Anything from $10,000 up to $200,000 of PPP that you wanted to claim, you can refer them to me and I can help them out. Or even up to the max, I can help them.
Excellent.
The PPP. Doesn't matter whatever amount.
Thank you so much, Reddy. And please make sure to put your information in the chat box. Reddy has been a great resource for lending and he's one of my trusted partners. So if you need any help, make sure to reach out to Reddy.
Yes, please. And this is free, okay? Free.
No, you can't, you can't beat that.
Free service.
And PACE is, is part of the SBA training program, right? Like the...
Yeah, it's, it's a CD of a lender.
Great, right. Thank you so much, Reddy. Up next, some quick health tips from an RN. Let's call in Roslyn.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Roslyn Arciaga, and I'm a registered nurse from, and I work for LA County Department of Health Services. So hopefully, I'll be able to give you some tips regarding what's going on right now with COVID-19. So as you all know, this is just a reminder that there's three important ways to slow the spread of COVID-19. Wear a mask to protect yourself and others and stop the threat spread of COVID-19. Stay at least, at least six feet, about two arms' length, from others who don't live with you. Avoid crowds. The more people you are in contact with, the more likely you are to be exposed to COVID-19. Next slide, please. Okay, to date, there are 25,152, 433 cases in Los Angeles County. And these numbers are really big. So hopefully, with the vaccine that's, that we have right now, we could decrease the numbers and go on with regular, normal life. Next, next slide, please. Okay, so these are the symptoms to watch out for. Fever or chills, if you have any cough, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, new loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion or runny nose, nausea or vomiting, and diarrhea. And I know these, these symptoms are like flu. But if you have any of these symptoms, do get yourself tested for COVID-19. So these are some questions that a lot of people have asked, and hopefully, you know, like, why is vaccination important? Vaccination is a safe and effective way to prevent disease. Vaccine saves millions of lives each year. When we get vaccinated, we aren't just protecting ourselves, but also the people around us. So how does vaccine work? Vaccine works by preparing the body's immune system to recognize to fight and fight off germs. They reduce your risk of getting a disease by working your body's natural defenses to build protection. So instead of treating a disease after it happens, vaccines can prevent us from getting sick in the first place. Can you get COVID-19 from a vaccine? Oh, no. None of the COVID-19 vaccines being developed in the United States have the virus that causes COVID-19. It usually takes a few weeks for the body to build immunity after vaccination. If a person gets infected with a virus just, just before or just after they get a shot, they could still get COVID-19. This is because the vaccine has not had enough time to provide protection. Will getting the vaccine cost me to test positive and COVID-19 tests? No. This is because one of the ways that vaccines work is to teach your body to make antibodies. So people right now are getting, the slide before, please, Lois. So, so right now, the vaccines that are being, being given are Phase 1A healthcare. The one, after that, you had the right slide. So basically, Phase 1A is for healthcare workers and long-term care facilities. Actually, right now, there's like a, a group of healthcare workers that are going to long-term care facilities, actually giving vaccine in the facilities. Phase 1B are frontline essential workers and people that are greater than 75 years old. Phase 1C, 65 to 74 years old, 16 to 64 years old, and other essential workers. And actually, to date, as of 12 noon, there were 24,652 and 634 vaccines that were given. Next slide, please. Lois, next slide. Okay. So basically, again, I'm reminding everyone to stay safe by wearing a mask, hand washing, sanitizing your hands, and of course, social distancing. Next slide, please. And hopefully, all of us are in the stay-home club. And basically, disinfecting surfaces, sanitize your groceries, stay inside using online delivery, and let the sun shine in. Next slide. And it is going to be okay. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you to our in-house registered nurse for that COVID tips. And we're going to go into our breakout rooms. So if you can put in the chat box which breakout room you'd like to go. And if you also have the ability to do that, if you have the updated version of the breakout room, we have three, I'm sorry, five groups, which is President, President's Room, Events, Membership, Affiliates, and Entrepreneurs. So while we're doing that, quick commercial break with Andre Woods.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me be the sponsor, make the sponsor commercial tonight. I am a board member as well, Woods Insurance Services. Tonight, events would not be possible without our event sponsors. Thank you for our event sponsorship this month, virtual forum. Ms. SP.
Did we lose audio? I think we lost... Fatima, are you okay? So thank you to our event sponsor, Espy Agbayani. She's a broker. You may contact her at 818-770-0579. Her website is www-retireandsellwithesp.com. And also, thank you Star Tomlinson of the Drain Company. You may contact Star at 818-602-5959, thedraincompany.com. Shortly after this event, you'll receive a feedback form. Your feedback is important to us. So please, it helps us know your experience about our event, what went well, what needs improvement. So please complete the survey. Soon as you receive it, the first 10 people to complete the survey will have a shout-out on our Facebook page, which has about 9,000 reach in the last 30 days. Thank you so much. Dori Baghalian for our member feedback.
Good evening, everyone. This is Dori Baghalian. I'm one of the board members. Now, of course, this is the 2020 Year End Member Feedback Survey. The Chamber has sent a year-end member and feedback survey a couple of times last year to all FAC GLA members. It takes about a few minutes to complete. It has questions about our events, membership, communication, leadership, and volunteer opportunities. Your voice is very important to us, and we highly value our member engagement. So please, tell us what you liked about last year and what you'd like to see this year. If you haven't completed it yet, we highly encourage your participation. We will send the members' survey form in our email. This is a blind survey, but if you wish to be contacted, please make sure to fill out your contact information. Thank you in advance, and we appreciate your feedback. Now, turning it over to our president-elect, Ms. Lois Claver.
Thank you, Ms. Dori Baghalian. So, okay, I guess some of the people joined the breakout rooms already. So you can join any of the rooms. You can leave a room and join a different room. You can start with your 30-second introductions and answer, you know, this question, "How can we thrive in 2021? Any feedback for the chamber?" The breakout room leads will moderate the time and make sure everyone gets to share. Then we go back to the main room after 10 minutes to share any takeaways. So, okay, so I'm going to open the room, so feel free to join. And if you cannot do that, I can help you join the room. Just let me know in the chat. All right, so opening now. Back. Thank you, guys. And I just wanted to acknowledge everyone. I know we're over time. We covered, it's kind of like our annual report, so we covered a lot of things. So thank you so much for staying with us. Really, really appreciate it. And real quick, if bullet points on the topics that you've discussed, I'm going to start with the presidential room.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm going like, what are we talking about? Well, we talked a little bit about music, and of course, we were encouraging George to go live online to get more clients, because you know, Claire has products, and she is an online store, but George, you know, is sells insurance. So we thought it might be interesting, because some of our members here are actually social media experts, and you can connect with them. And I'd like to say also... And I'd like to say also that Roslyn, George had a question about, and I forgot what it was, but it was about COVID. So I hope you can connect and he can ask you your question. And that's, that's the thing about our discussion, music for kids, the hour of quiet that it can get you. And, and all that stuff. Thank you, Claire and George, for the conversation.
And we spoke about babysitting as well.
It's important for you to run business, you know, those little things. That's why we have these public service. You're like, why are we talking about this? Well, you're not a business person 24/7. You have a personal life. So we got to complement that, right? Okay, thanks, President Annie and Fatima for events. Thanks so much for leading the discussion. So bullet points on what we are takeaways.
Okay, we actually had four. One is to keep doing what we've been doing with the board as well as all of you, our members. And then keep the top-notch presentations. And we really did have some top-notch presenters tonight with our partners and alliances. And then continue more collaborations and partnerships. And finally, at least this is from, from Mick, to provide some help for the businesses, the small businesses, who found ways to launch their, their services during COVID. But now, as we are going back to normal, hopefully, will, will they want to legitimize their, their business? That's my word. And if so, how, how do they do that? And maybe somehow, Mick, did I kind of capture that?
Can I answer that quickly? So earlier, we heard from CIPA, there's an entrepreneurship training program, which is four sessions. It barely, it costs nothing, if not next to nothing. And it is how to start or run your business, the basics on that. So who asked the question? Was it Mick?
Yep, it was Mick.
Okay, Mick and I have regular conversations. I guess I'm going to tell her when we talk.
Right, that was it from our team.
Okay, great. And up next, let's hear from the affiliates group, Jerry.
Okay, I also wanted to represent the leadership team for the chambers. We really need to continue to remain relevant and useful to our members by continuously connecting with them through these events that we are doing virtual. Secondly, we also need to enhance our value proposition for our members. And as leaders, we have to take the positive outlook. And despite this pandemic, we all better lead, L-E-A-D, through, rather than leave, L-I-V, through this disruption. We all know that there's disruption. But to summarize that, since we are now into the new technology, new norm, we're not expecting anymore to really 100% to go back to the old norm. So we all have to adjust ourselves to this new norm, learning faster in terms of technology and adapting to these changes. The sooner we do it, and the, you know, the faster we do it, the better for us. And we will all thrive in this new environment. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Jerry. Yeah, we'll be collecting everyone's notes because those are very good. And last but not least, what did I miss? Oh, membership. Connie.
Yes, so we have, who do we have? So we have Apple, and we have Star, of course, Marco, and Ellen, and the membership committee in our room. And we have a lot of suggestions for 2021 to try more educational workshop, meetups. Marco suggesting a meetup, virtuals, you know, optimizing web tools, virtual break, more breakout rooms for networking. And Star was actually suggesting to have a stress relief Zoom and self-maintenance as well for the chamber, since we don't know how long we're going to do a virtual. And Apple is, of course, suggesting to have, for business owners to have more, that they can handle more marketing their business, VA is the solution to their business, right? And Celeste also. And that's just about it. Thank you. Thank you, Lois.
Great. Thank you. Very, very good suggestions and very good takeaways. And thank you, everyone, again, for joining and participating. So I'd like to call on our president to close us off.
There you go. Thank you so much for enjoying this evening. I know it's, for joining us this evening, I hope you enjoyed. I know it's a lot of information, but really, once you know, you, you like, get like the gist of the whole thing, the key is really to connect with the people in the chamber. And the board actually is here to be your ambassador. That's why someone is always texting you, emailing you, or contacting you. And that's how we can get the information to you. So our executive committee is very hardworking. Thank you so much. Of course, to Vanji Tabira, our secretary, Connie, our VP for Membership, our president emeritus, who is still, very much still working with us. And of course, to our president-elect and our vice president for events, and who is the busiest woman on earth, if I should say so. Thank you so much. Lois, and do we have a slide for our other board members? Because, yeah, so the, if you saw the membership slideshow earlier, was that so you could familiarize yourself? I must be hungry. Must be familiarize yourself with the people in the, in the call. And, you know, start learning who people are. And if your concern is getting some help for your business, a lot of our resources are free. If it's not free from us, we can find the connection for you. Well, it's most probably free also or supported by nonprofit funding. So these are the people who you connect with, of course, Dr. Fatima, Celeste, Henry Chen, Dori, Gemma, Espy, Vivian, Roslyn, and Andre Woods. And do we have anything else? So we have our contact app. And, you know, we're always available. We hope you friend us on Facebook. Contact us. We have a website. Yes, we do. You can point your camera. Just, just open your camera app on your phone, and it's going to lead you to our website in case you wanted to learn more stuff. Our Facebook page is mostly active with announcements that we get. You can't believe the amount of information we get. And especially with the COVID Relief Fund, which are grants that are, that had finished its first round. Hopefully, the second round is coming up, and we get to hear about these things. So everyone, please stay connected with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Annie. To close us off, may I call on Roslyn?
Well, thank you, everyone. This concludes our monthly virtual forum. On behalf of the officers and board members of FAC GLA, thank you for your participation. See you at our next virtual event, and have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye. Have a good night.
Good night.
We'll do networking next month, and this is, this is longer. So thank you for your patience. Really appreciate it. Good night, everybody.